Good evening. Welcome to our third chapter of budget. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask everyone just to remain standing for a moment of silence for player fighter Christopher Roy, who died in action yesterday, for his family and all his brothers and sisters in the force. Thank you. Professor.
Well, as you stated, this is going to be the third in a grouping of introductory things on how to do the budget. The first two were designated for our very first meeting to talk about how we're coming up with what we're going to do this year insofar as what is the percentage increase going to be. The second piece that we did, we went over the capital projects and what we've spent money on. And tonight, the third piece is going to be some town comps that we're going to do. Before we start, I asked Mr. Clifford to come in because this is the Board of Selectment, the Finance Committee in the Capitol, and I want to go over something very quickly to dispel. We've recently received through the, from lawyer to lawyer, an argument basically saying that the town has, for the second year, not placed the school budget onto the warrant and that something bad has happened and legal action is going to take place. So what I did first before here, because I'm going to have Mr. Clifford answer this, is I gave you all a package that looks like this. And what it includes is the school's submittal for 2019, and that would be on the very last two pages of this budget. The second piece that is connected to this is the infamous annual town report, not town report, town warrant, which we make large quantities of and throw away most of them after we're done, to the tune of five to 600 of them. If you will turn to page 15 and 16 and take a quick look of, under the thing called Fiscal 2019 Department Request, and then make a very quick perusal of the last page of the school's submittal, you will find that the exact amount is in that column. And you can take 30 seconds or a minute to go through the entire thing if you'd like and see if there's even one number that does not match what was put in. Now, having said that, I've also attached this orange sheet to the back of it, which is nothing more than four or five towns, one of them being the annual town meeting warrant for the town of Prembrook, to show how they put theirs together. And again, it's very similar to the town of East Bridgewater's, only lacking in the number of columns. We have many more columns on there. So this is the way we've done the warrant for over 30 years, at least since I've been here, and it was being done this way 30 years before. And I just simply, before we go on and we get put into a quagmire of non-budgetary stuff, I wanted Mr. Clifford to answer this question and tell us whether there's something incorrect here or something done wrong. So I'll let you go, Mr. Clifford.
So I am in the process of preparing a response to counsel for the school committee's letter, and the letter has been provided to the Board of Selectment, I believe. The principal issue that's been raised at the last couple of annual town meetings and is being raised in this letter is the meaning of a sentence in Chapter 71, Section 34. And the sentence reads, "In acting on appropriations for educational costs, the city or town appropriating body shall vote on the total amount of the appropriations requested and shall not allocate appropriations among accounts or place any restriction on such appropriations." That sentence, read in its entirety, to me, stands for one very simple proposition, that East Bridgewater cannot go to town meeting, nor can any other community, and say that we would like to earmark $5 million of the school's budget for science and $3 million for reading, et cetera, et cetera. It stands for the proposition, and there is case law to support this, that a town cannot earmark educational items. And basically, the East Bridgewater School Committee has the statutory authority to spend their bottom line budget however they see fit, as long as the expenditures are legal. So that authority to break up budgets, which is an authority that town meeting has with other department budgets, town meeting can move line item to line item and put restrictions on line items for other departments' budgets. They do not have that kind of town meeting control over the school department budget. The sentence is apparently been read to basically break it into separate parts that says that town meeting shall vote on the total amount of appropriations requested, and then leave out the second part of the sentence, says and shall not break it up into component parts and put restrictions on the component parts. And there are cases cited in the letter, the case that is cited most prominently is a 1958 case. What's important for people to understand is that in 1978, Proposition 2 and 1/2 was passed. And prior to that, basically, the way the school budget operated was the school committee would submit a budget and the town meeting, the town basically had to approve it. Now, when Prop 2 and 1/2 was passed, there were a lot of reforms made with regard to how towns appropriate their funds. But in this case, the argument has boiled down to the simple proposition that somehow the town, and it's not specifically identified who in the town of East Bridgewater, is violating the law because we do not automatically vote on the school committee budget. And I've gone through a lot of this, and I've gone through some of the material that George has, I've actually watched the meeting. What has to happen, what happens with every single article that this town meeting and every other town meeting votes on is somebody makes a motion. In the case of East Bridgewater and all of the other communities that we've looked at, the budget article in the annual town meeting warrant starts with the motion that you act on the Finance Committee's recommendations. So at the beginning of your budget discussions, the body, the town meeting, votes to say, "We are going to vote on this particular column, the Finance Committee recommendations." As Mr. Samia indicated, this warrant and every other warrant that I've seen in East Bridgewater contains the department request in a separate column. So when the Board of Selectmen prepares the warrant, they are putting the school committee's request and every other request before town meeting. But in the interest of proceeding with some sort of order and actually having a discussion about a balanced budget, town meeting votes on a motion to consider the Finance Committee's budget. It's not all that complicated. At that point, someone, anybody, the police chief, Mr. Allen could stand up and say, "I make a motion, I want to amend that motion that we act on my recommended budget, not the Finance Committee's budget." He can vote to amend that motion. Any department can, and the school committee can. The school committee, last year, the chair got up and moved to amend the budget article during the discussion to actually put the school committee's requested budget before the voters. What this letter and the objection that was raised multiple times at town meeting last year seems to state is that no one should have to make a motion, that it should automatically be put before the voters. I'm not even sure how that would operate. Town meeting, any meeting operates on motions. If someone disagrees with the motion that's on the floor, they make a motion to amend. It's pretty straightforward, pretty simple. So the continuing objection that's now been put in the form of a legal letter threatening legal action against someone, I'm not quite sure who, that we have to vote on the school department budget without a motion, candidly, I'm totally confused by it. There is something called Occam's razor, where the simplest solution is obviously the best solution. The simplest solution is for the school committee to stand up, move to amend the motion or amend the budget to go with their budget article, their budget request. That's how everything gets put before voters at our town meeting. Someone makes a motion. I don't know why there is this opposition to making a motion. Voters stand up and make motions, and then they defend those motions or explain why they're moving to amend something. I don't know why there should be an exception. I really can't understand how there could be any other process to discuss a different version of the budget without someone making a motion to do so. So do I believe that there's any legal validity to this assertion that the school committee's requested budget automatically goes before voters without any motion to do so? No, I do not believe there's any validity to that. Again, from a practical point of view, I'm not even sure how it would make sense for that to happen.
It's a question, John. Looking at the warrant from last year, when the Finance Committee came in with 49, 255, school committee came in with 49, 472, the last column says, "Total voted by town meeting is what the Finance Committee put forth." Could that be what their problem is? That that's sitting there saying that this is what the voters haven't even voted when this gets put out, I guess is the question.
As I understand the objection that was made a couple of times at town meeting and in the letter, that the school committee's requested budget has to be put before voters, has to be put before voters. So now, assuming the Finance Committee, and there was some scrambling last year, when voters approved the higher request, I think it was an additional $130,000 last year, there does have to be some adjustment with the other numbers. Because at the end of the day, the Finance Committee is charged with the difficult task of balancing the budget. So if you increase any line item significantly, then we have to account for the funds, we have to come up with the revenue somewhere, either that or make budget reductions in another line. We still have to end town meeting with the balanced budget. So, but it's my understanding, to answer your question, that it is the school committee's requested bottom line budget that, again, there is a belief that somehow that automatically goes before the voters without a motion.
So you're in the process of responding to the school committee's lawyer?
Yes.
Okay.
May I ask a question? Just for clarity, with Mr. Clifford sitting right here, just from my own experience on the school committee, you have, you know, the school committee is tasked by having a public hearing and having, they have to approve a budget for their public hearing. My understanding, and I could be wrong, so I'm asking for clarity, is that they voted on a particular budget and that number was not put on the warrant. A different number was put on the warrant. Correct me if I'm wrong. If I'm wrong, please correct me.
I just passed out the warrant, and I passed out the submittal.
On the warrant, if you look at page 30, if you look at the total general fund of 49, 472, 51925, I believe that's what the school committee voted last year. It's on the warrant.
That's what was on? Okay, so then I'm, then I'm just thinking that.
In fact, not only does it match by bottom line, one of the things I just asked, and I know it's kind of hard to do on the fly, but you're welcome to go through and see if there's a single dollar that's different from what the submittal was. I checked it, you can do all the same.
So just to clarify, in terms of the different roles, the Board of Selectmen has the responsibility of putting together the warrant. So either citizen petition articles or department requests go in the warrant, and the Board of Selectmen has some ability to reject them. The budget article is the Finance Committee's article. But the Board of Selectmen, in putting together that article that goes before town meeting, they include department requests. So the number is present. All a warrant article is, is a warning of a subject that could be discussed. People who go to town meeting are very familiar with it. When an article comes up, it doesn't just get voted on, the moderator asks for a motion. Motion is made and seconded, then we have our discussion. And again, any motion can be amended by anyone on the floor. Again, it seems like the most obvious solution for this is for the school committee to move to amend their budget when it comes up. That seems to be the most obvious answer to this question.
Which has been done time and time again.
Yes.
I'll also add one last piece. For 30 years, I can't speak for, you know, me on that, but I mean, probably, but that is pretty much the same thing. We, every time that there is a town meeting, it is then submitted to the town clerk, who has to put it into the state to be certified by the, there's never been a problem with anything that has been certified. So if we were in some type of violation of the law, I would think that the state wasn't the end of the, I'm forgetting the guy's name, it's a colon that does it. If you guys didn't go, they would have come back and told us we were wrong. So with that, are you, is anybody satisfied?
No, I'm just curious why suddenly, this has come up in the last couple of years, when, on the town side, you haven't changed the way the budget's been presented. Any town I've ever worked for, this is the way the budget's presented. It's always department requests and then recommendations, whether it's from the Board of Selectmen or the FinCom.
I think the answer's out there, is last year when we had town meeting, we had, the school committee was questioning it.
Right, but I'm not even talking about like that.
In questioning the law.
Right.
At that point.
I mean, and I'm not even talking about voting on a different amount. That's fine. I think that, you know, it's perfectly acceptable to raise that on, like you said, John, on any article. I just wonder why all of a sudden this has become this bone of contention.
I think it's a misinterpretation of the legality of it.
And they've got a lawyer telling them one thing and you're telling us a different thing.
I mean, if there's dissatisfaction with the amount of monies being appropriated, you know, you know, and we've been saying this for two years, that's not a legal issue.
Right.
That's not a statutory interpretation issue. That's a question of making the case before voters to appropriate more money. It's really fairly straightforward.
So going into this next town meeting, regardless of what number the school committee comes up with would be in the book, they would have to actually amend it if it doesn't match what the FinCom has worked out with them, correct? That's just what it comes down to.
As always.
In other years, actually, two years ago, the superintendent offered a number that was in between what was put forward to be the school department request and the Finance Committee's budget. So even, the school department has done things other than put forward their own numbers. So, I mean, it's perfectly appropriate. I mean, I think the process calls for, you know, discussion and compromise, and you hope that's what you end up with. I mean, if each department were to submit a department request and then just go before the voters and say, "Well, that's what I want, that's, you know, it is what it is." I mean, it would not be a particularly smooth budget discussion, I'm sure. But again, there's a pretty simple, straightforward mechanism, and make the motion, offer rationale for the motion, and town meeting can vote it up or down, it's pretty simple. But I think we've brought down in legal issues, this is not a legal issue. If there's dissatisfaction with the total funding, that's not a legal issue.
Anyone else? Mr. Marjorie.
Question to you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Clifford, is this witness, the idea of just automatically taking what the school committee offers is what they think they need, is the only number going on there, take away the, maybe not authority, but the recommendation, the wisdom and the purpose of the Finance Committee? My understanding is that's the reason they're there, is to kind of, as an outside party or an outside group from each department to kind of weigh on what each department's requesting, look at it in the whole, is the whole departments, the whole request for the departments of the town, as well as the well-being of the town's finances.
Once we get to town meeting, and again, it's important for everybody to understand their roles, Board of Selectmen prepares the warrant, they're at town meeting, the Board of Selectmen has no official role at town meeting, that's true of the school committee and all the other boards. The one board or committee that has an official role at town meeting, in fact, has a mandate, is the Finance Committee. They're required to review every request for appropriation and make recommendations. That's their mandate. So not only, you know, is it inappropriate to say that, you know, that they can't be discussed, they have a mandate to make their recommendations. Now again, the voters are free to disagree with their recommendation, but they make their recommendations, that's their job.
Thank you.
Can I just ask for a point of clarification, and I'm sorry if I'm just not getting it. So you're suggesting that any department, if they disagree with the number that's presented by the Finance Committee, that they can get up and file a motion to amend that number, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the question that I have in regards to this particular question is, if the amount was written as the school department wanted it, then why would they have to make a motion at that? They're asking, this is where I'm just trying to learn myself now, as a role, you know, this is a training for the Finance Committee to better understand, how can we eliminate this issue going forward if the school committee is the, is a committee that's different from other committees, that they have a public hearing regarding their budget? You don't have to restrict, the town can't restrict those, that money. What I'm understanding is that whatever they put forth at public hearing and vote on doesn't necessarily get put on the warrant because the Finance Committee makes the decision. Am I on the right track at this point?
I don't think so, because both numbers get put on the warrant.
So they both, the both numbers get put on the warrant, but in the article, which number isn't, and if they have to make a motion? This is where I'm just asking, because I don't understand it.
It's a financial recommendation. That might differ from the school committee voted budget, but they're both there, so people can see.
They can see both numbers, but on the art, I guess this is where I'm trying to get to your point in regards to the legal question. If it, if both numbers are there, you're saying that the school committee or whatever department has the right to change it. Why can't both numbers be put on the article? Maybe I'm missing something. But they're not, but I understand.
Let me explain, and I think this will answer your question. We start the budget article with the motion for the voters, everybody present, to act on the Finance Committee recommendations versus some other version of the budget.
I get that, okay.
And the voters say, "Yes, we want to do that." All right, I've never seen, I'm pretty sure it's been unanimous, that's the column we're going to act on. So the voters decided that's the version they want to vote on.
Okay.
Again, within that, someone can make a motion to say, "We want to consider some other number." But we, and I think it's, you know, I think to do anything else is chaos. If you were to put two separate budgets on the floor at the same time, I don't know how you.
You wouldn't be, and I get that. So I'm just trying to figure out a way so that we don't, because it seems like this is an issue every year. So how can we better educate ourselves to make sure the Finance Committee?
And we, I'm at a loss to explain why this is an issue. It's, again, there's a very simple solution, and it was the solution employed by the school committee at last year's annual town meeting. The chairwoman of the school committee stood up and said, "I make a motion that we consider a higher number." The motion to amend the article passed, ultimately, the town meeting had gone to the higher number. It seems like a pretty simple mechanism, and it's been employed at town meetings going back hundreds of years. So I'm not sure why that is no longer sufficient. I guess that's my question.
Maybe that's a discussion that the liaison to the school needs to have, needs to have with them, so that there's clarification right from the get-go.
Yes.
So that we can move forward on this, so that everyone has a better understanding.
That was essentially, look, this is, what this is all about, is preparing the budget for fiscal '20 this year. Moving forward, the reason that I had Mr. Clifford come in is I do not want to be bogged down with this side stuff that has nothing really to do with the budget. So in having said that, I, there are the three boards here, the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the Capitol. Having heard what Mr. Clifford said, and having proven on paper that both the budgets are where they're supposed to be, it is my intent to move forward the same way we have moved forward for the past 30 years since I've been here and maybe 100 before that, and produce the budget in exactly the same way, because there's nothing wrong with that. And then, and unless somebody in the room says that there is something wrong with it, that's what I intend to do. Does anybody want to go further?
I think we'll end it at this point. I think we've beaten this down enough. Everyone understands the information that goes to town meeting, all the figures are there, the department's request, the Finance Committee's request. And again, the Finance Committee has to propose a balanced budget. Their budget calls for something less in a department, we have a process of adjusting at a town meeting, and that's where we should end it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clifford.
Thank you.
Everybody, starting with the Board of Selectmen. All right, now we'll move into the final phase.
All right, now we'll move into the final phase of, of where we are. And again, like I mentioned a little bit about a half hour ago before we started. Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Thank you. I keep the legal budget down. So we started out with, we started out talking about, and I'm kind of dogging it while they're passing out these papers, but we started out this process with arranging for how do we do or come up with how much money we're going to spend. We continued on with, here's the Capitol budget, and this is how the budget is passed out, and this is how it's done. And tonight, what I wanted to do is you hear a lot of things during the course of a year, and you'll hear things, everything from, we're the highest taxed town in the state of Massachusetts, we're not spending enough money in this particular area, or we're out of violation on this. So I thought I'd do what I call some multi-town comps tonight. So whenever you're doing comps, oftentimes you might ask, well, where are you getting these numbers from, or what are the, the towns that, or whatever that you're using, and why did you use them? So if we start off right here, and I'm going to look here, you'll notice I've got 25 towns here besides the town of East Bridgewater, starting with the town of Abington and ending with the town of Winthrop. Now, at first glance, the first thing somebody would say is, why Winthrop? Why Uxbridge? Why Northbridge? Where the heck are you coming up with these numbers as a? Well, the, the point of the matter is, is I went online to the Department of Revenue, and all this stuff is, is all available. So what I tried to do is, you want to get a demographic that's very similar to the town of East Bridgewater. So let's start off with the population. So if you look on this for the people at home, the, the population of East Bridgewater is 14,00343. Now, if you go down to Abington, of course, it's 16,00227. If you go to Carver, it's 11,00629. If you go to Hanover, it's 14,424. But if you take all the towns together and you average them out, they come out, you have a super town here of 13,950, or approximately, East Bridgewater is 393 people, higher than all these towns averaged out. Okay? Next, if you look, East Bridgewater has a revenue stream for 2018. It was $52,021,741. Well, again, we'll go down, and I, I don't want to belay at this point, beat the horse to a pulp, but Abington is at 58 million, okay? Carver's 47. Hanover is, is 66. Norwell is at 58. But if you take all of them together, the average town in this has a revenue stream of about $55 million compared to our $52 million. Now comes this stuff that is probably the most telling of it all, the average tax bill, okay? Average tax bill for the town of East Bridgewater, this is called your single-family tax bill, is $5,844. That's coming right off the thing for 2000, and I believe if, where is it? This year, it's 2018, okay? Now, look at, take a look at these. Now again, they're all different, 6,113 for Abington, Hanover is 8,002. But if you take them and put them all together again, the average town here, the average single-family tax bill is 5,866, worth in $22 of what everybody else is. So to start with, that's going to dispel some of this, well, you know, we're the highest taxed town on the face of Massachusetts, because as you can see, some of the towns up there, Abington is at 6,113, and these are the averages, this isn't the high end or the low, this is average house. Some of them are a little lower than we are. 5,132 is where Norton is, okay? But put all together, they're within $22 of the town of East Bridgewater. Now here's where the, the interesting stuff, and I'm, I'm, I'm giving the evil eye to, to Paula on this one, because each year, nothing that she's done, but I mean, each year she'll come in and she will talk about the setting of the tax rate. And each year, we go over and we talk about how the tax rate has an inverse relationship to the value of the homes in town. Therefore, if you had two towns with only one house in them, and the house was worth a half a million in both towns, and you had a tax rate of $10 per household, okay? And then suddenly, the house in the other town became a million, the tax rate would go down to $5. Conversely, if the tax rate went up, it goes the opposite way. So there's something very telling here when you take a look at the town of East Bridgewater's tax rate, meaning it's $17.96 when compared to $12.71 as a total for most of the other towns. What does that necessarily mean? Not entirely, but I'm going to say a good piece of that would mean that the values of the homes in East Bridgewater are someplace around 15 to 20% less than probably what they are in a lot of the other towns out there on average. Another piece that, that you probably want to see is the per capita income for the town. The town of East Bridgewater has a per capita income of $32,000, and the average for all these towns is 42,267. We're off by about 31% there, okay? Meaning that if you look, the town of East Bridgewater is hanging in there with its 5,844 average tax bill, and it is putting out the same as these other towns, yet the other towns have higher-valued homes and a higher value per capita income. Having said that, we have this base of where are we, you know, you know, this is why we're using this particular setting, rather than just grabbing somebody off the, the street. Now, for those of you that were here the last couple of meetings, you'll remember this pie chart. I used the pie chart to show where is the town of East Bridgewater on its revenues, okay? Now I want to use this pie chart, which is the second page, that talks about where the average is for the state of Massachusetts on the expenditures. And by the way, I want to thank Erica on this one, because it was her that pulled it out. This is coming from the Division of Local Services, and what they try to do is set down in a book, here's your averages for where everybody is in spending with the state of Massachusetts. Doesn't mean that everybody's spending exactly this, there's some higher, there's some lower. But in short, if you're looking at it, they're saying police on this chart, expenditures for it is about 7, 7.68% of the, of the budget. So now let's take a quick look at the budget expenditures. So let's go over here, and we say that, that the town of East Bridgewater is 44,001,897, and the average town out there is 44,909, or approximately, we're just about $800,000, $890,000 under what all the others are spending in their entire budget. So now let's take a look at where we are. So now they break it out, and they talk about police expenditures. So your police expenditure for, for the town of East Bridgewater is 2,000, 2,437, and then as we go down here, you have Abington and everyone else. So to make a long story short on the, the packages that I gave each of you, what I tried to do is I went through and I sorted each one of those areas out, okay, for you. So you can see on there, where does East Bridgewater fall? For example, it says multi-town comp. Go to the next, there's actually, I'm, I'm looking at, it's, go to the next one, that's the whole thing. But now, if you're just looking for police, you, you can see it. So you, you can see on there, where does, where does East Bridgewater fall? Well, the, the, the final thing is, is that all these towns are averaging about 6.46%. The state is saying that, you know, you probably should be around, I mean, the average, and not, you should be, is 7.68%, and we're at 5.54. So we're maybe just slightly under where the rest of the state is averaging out, or at least this 25 towns, and then the, what the state is saying that, that the rest are for police spending. Where are we for fire spending? Well, on, on here, it says 5.59. We're at 5.39, okay? So that's pretty damn close. The average for these 25 towns is 4.85. So we're maybe just about where the state average is, maybe a little bit better than what some of these are, and, and I think the reason, the rationale is, is if you look at, and the chief and I discussed this at last summer, was you take a look at South Hadley, they don't have any spending on there. That's because it's a fire district. So that's probably skewing the number down slightly on that particular piece. Now let's go over to education. According to the, the pinwheel here or the, or the pie chart, they're saying average is about 48.03. Town of East Bridgewater is 48.58%. What is the, the average for these 25 towns? 49.12. We're off just a little bit, like 3.3% from there. We're right on with, with the state of Massachusetts. Public Works is one that's, that's odd. If you look at the Public Works, I know the first thing everybody's going to say is 1,760. This does not include in it the water and the solid waste. We talked about this two meetings ago. Those are enterprise funds, they are self-sufficient, and they are not taking the money that we are using for the budget. They are fee-oriented, and, and that's how they, they make it work. So what you're really seeing here is the DPW prime, meaning just the things that are, are funded by the budget. So in the town of East Bridgewater, we have 4% of our operating budget is going to public, the public works sector. In most of these other towns, it's like 5.34. So under that, we're just a little bit lighter. Debt service, this, this is the interesting piece, okay? Do you recall, only a couple of meetings ago, I think, and one of the things I actually pulled out, the Moody's report? Moody's said, the town of East Bridgewater has a slightly higher-than-average debt service. And even though it's up there, we are backing that up with reserves. Well, let's take a look at where our debt service is here in East Bridgewater. It's 9.96 according to this, okay? As opposed to 7.28 for the, the, the towns that are on the, in the, in this set of 25, okay? Slightly higher. Debt service for, where is it on here? Is about 7.27. So again, we're, we're a little higher than the state average. What, what, how would you say, what would be the, the biggest thing? Well, obviously, we've got about 70 to 75 million outstanding in debt right now. 40 of it is the new school and the, the senior center, or whatever you want to call it, the, the Sagum Rock Center. So that would, that would probably account for the higher portion of that. Our expenditures for, for health is, is 8.93, and we are actually exceeding what most of, you know, just by a little bit, but it's about 8.19 for the average for the towns out here. And that's with us going into the, the GIC and actually keeping the price down on it. The pensions for the town, pension expenditure, we're at 5.33. The other towns are someplace around 4.93. I believe Moody's said that the last time out too, is that we have a higher, slightly higher-than-average pension and, and debt, debt service. Then what they do is they bulk all other into this, meaning this, this is everything else that wasn't really out there. So you know, this is the Selectmen, Building Department, Board of Health, assessors, treasurer collector, accountant, COA, all these things, this is all other, because they're small enough that they, I guess they don't feel that it's there. Most of the all others for the town, about 13.82, we're about 12.88. So when you start looking at the comps for the town, we're not all that far off. Now, I did do this chart, which is at the back of your thing. What I tried to do is make a bar chart that took into the, into account the, the state's pie chart, the town of East Bridgewater, and then the 25-town average, and this make a visual with it. The only place that I'm going to come out before we even go anywhere, you see the two asterisks, pension and healthcare? For whatever the reason, when you're trying to do something and get consistent numbers from the state, everything's done differently. So when you get to the portion on the pie chart that comes for, for what they call pension and health, it's, it's bulked under a larger fixed cost number, and it's not broken out. So what I did, I simply did is, if you notice, it's 6.21, 6.21. Best guess, I just cut it in two. My real, the, truthfully, it probably is much closer to the 8.93 and the five, but I'm not going to fudge it and then be told that I, you know, he purposely put that down there to make it look different than what it was. So I'm telling you full, full, I just split it up the middle here. But if you take a look, this is a thing, so we have police, we're at, state average is 7.68, East Bridgewater's 5.54, the 25-town average is 6.47. Fire, 5.59. East Bridgewater, 5.39. Average for the 25 towns, 4.85. Education, according to the state, 48. East Bridgewater, 48.58. Average town, 48, 49.12. Public Works, 5.94. East Bridgewater's 4, 5.43. Debt service, 7.27 for average, we're at 9.96, and the average 25 towns is 7.28. Your health insurance, 6.21 for the state, 8.93 for East Bridgewater, 8.19 for the rest. Pensions, again, I'm, I mean, remember, these, the, the state portion is just me splitting it right up the middle, but if you just even just concentrate on these two, we're kind of in a, in line five. 8.93 for the health insurance, 8.19. 5.33, 4.93 for the pensions. And finally, all the others is 13.07, 12.28, and 13.82. Now, what does all that mean? Essentially, there is no right or wrong way that a town decides what they have to put in. What this does show you is that, A, we are not the most taxed town out there. It also shows that we are not way off on our numbers. There's a couple that have fallen a little bit higher and a little bit lower, but we're kind of mirroring what the state of Massachusetts is, is saying is the average on these things. And so despite what you might hear, that, that, you know, we're way off on this, or we're, you know, we're under on that, we're kind of right in the, the ballpark of where we're supposed to be. Now, I don't know whether anybody, you know, any of the boards have any of, you know, questions before we move forward, because this is basically, we've done this last summer, and this was done primarily to, to give everybody an idea, are we in on it, and I mean, are we, are we, we're supposed to be? No, the fact that we're 5.4 on the police, 5.54, and the state says that everybody's doing 7.68, does that mean that there's something wrong? No. It just is giving you some kind of a bar chart or a benchmark, if you will, to say, are we that far off? By the way, if, if I go back and I, and the, the. By the way, if, if I go back and I, and the board, the board knows this, the Board of Selectment would know it. But if you look at these same, um, towns and cities, we use these, oftentimes people say, "Where the hell did you guys come up with Joe Bo's salary?" Okay? Because, you know, whatever it is, whatever the department head is, okay? Well, what we do is we use this same pretty much set. Because in most towns, when you're, when you're dealing, uh, with the, the guy that's coming in would wanna say, "Well, you know, up in the city of Boston, they pay the guy five hundred thousand dollars to do this job." Okay? And then the town's counter would be, well, down in the town of Berkeley, where there's like three people, they're paying three dollars and sixty-two cents. So what you try to do is come up with a, um, you would come up with a, uh, a set which we use for all of our contracts, and try to come out with something that says, "Let's not be ridiculous and use the city of Boston. Let's try to use some towns with the same demographics as the town of East Bridgewater has." Now, there are probably others out there that we could throw in the mix, but twenty-five out of about three hundred, it's a good, it's a good cross-section if you're doing a statistical study. And where are all the numbers coming from? The state puts out a, a grouping called At-A-Glance Reports for every town, city out there. They are a derivative, and I know, um, uh, Phyllis is gonna probably roll her eyes back because she has to do this every year. We have two reports that create these numbers. One is the Schedule A, which is essentially a regurgitation of the entire, everything we've spent and everything we've brought in for the year that Phyllis has to go re-report, even though we've reported it four other times in four other directions. It's sent along to the state and then they use it in the state ba- data bank. The second would be the Schedule Nineteen, which is the school's end-of-the-year report. They have to report to, to make sure that we are in compliance with that reform. Those are the places where you're getting the, uh, most of these particular items, not to mention that they, a lot of it comes off of your recap sheet at the end of the year, which again, is audited and looked at by the state of Massachusetts. So having said that, that kind of takes us to kind of the end of this multi-town comp to give us an idea of where we are and what we're doing. And then I'm gonna sort of come back one more time to where we are. So we've, we've had this discussion, and we've got the, um, the three boards in here. And each year, we do this, okay? All these things we go over, this is the first year that it's been actually done on the television, where people can see it. But it's, it's been done this way every year for numerous years. So many times that I can see the people in the room rolling their eyes, 'cause we talk about it all the time. But the next step from here will be for me to go forward with the board, the, um, the many department heads, and ask for, what are we gonna start turning in this year for our budget? And then, in speaking with Glenn, from a capital standpoint, what are we going to do for capital this year? So let's do the capital first, it's the easier of the two. Each year, Glenn and the Capital Committee will accumulate from the various department heads, "Here are my requests. This is what I need. I need a new truck. I need a new, uh, building. I need this, I need that." We will look at those, those pieces, and then we talk to First Southwest to find out what a bond issuance is going to be on these, or at least an estimated bond issuance. And then we, we, we move on and say, "Do we have enough money? Well, if we put X amount from the free cash into that capital stabilization fund, we'll have enough to keep ourselves going and go from there." So this year, moving forward, we'll do the exact same thing again. We'll put out a request, we'll tell everybody out there, "Give us everything." Just because they pass it in doesn't mean you get it. It's what's going to fit. And then what we will do is move forward from there, and if we have the money to put in, we'll, 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 we'll put it in, and then we'll go to a town meeting. And again, one thing to keep in mind, that folks keep forgetting about each time, I've heard it so many times. We go to the town meeting and we say, "We're going to do two million dollars' worth of bonding." And then we go about putting five years of those bond issuances into the capital stabilization. And people mistrew that as being, we're, if we put five hundred thousand into the capital stabilization, they think we're spending two point five million, rather than placing the money in there, which is ultimately gonna be used to pay these bond issuances. So keep this in mind when you see that first capital piece. The money going in is the money that we are going to be utilizing for the capital requests that have been recommended. That'll be the plan for the capital. When we get back to moving in for the, um, for the, um, what are we going to do for, for this particular year for the budget? Let me see here, where are we? This is what we did last, two weeks ago, and people probably have forgotten it. But this was a five percent. We came up with, after going through the entire process, we came up with that we have approximately a million and thirty-eight thousand that we might be able to count on as fresh money coming in next year. Now, we were going through the process, I remember Carol even coming out and saying, "Yeah, that's a little high on the, on the, um, what was it, the, um, the new growth."
New growth.
Yeah. Probably was, okay? I'm giving it a little bit more, and, and then so, and Paula sort of backed that up, that I was a little bit high on it. But starting off with about a million thirty-eight, if we were saying a five percent increase, well, that's going to bring us down to negative one million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand. We don't have that kind of money for a five percent increase. So now I'm gonna go back up again, and I'm going to do a four percent increase. Okay, doing a four percent increase, where does that bring us to? Well, if I've got a million and thirty-eight, I'm still gonna be seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in the hole if we go with four. Let's try three. Okay, we'll come down to the bottom line again. Okay, we're still three hundred thousand dollars in the hole at a three percent. So let's try two. Two brings us down to approximately a buck forty-five out of the hole, assuming that I didn't go too, too high on the, the budget receipts. At this point, it could be a one and a half or a two. I'm gonna go with a two. And then I'm going to request that the departments come in and give us a two percent increase with a impact statement as to what is the impact of two percent? Well, I need three. And if I don't get three, I'm going to lose so-and-so. They can even put in a impact statement and a wish list budget along with it, so that the Finance Committee can sit down and logically go through all these budgets and say, "Of the million, maybe we don't wanna put out, um, exactly two. Maybe I wanna give Department A three and go down to Department, um, uh, Z and give them, um, a one." And as I showed you guys last week, when we did this, there is no, there, there is never been an, an exact across-the-board two percent, uh, you know, across the board. So with that, I'm kind of going to put it now on to you. That is the plan moving forward. It's very similar to the plan moving forward that we've had for a number of years. And I've gone over how we get to all these things. I'm kind of looking now for the Board of Selectment, the Finance Committee in the Capital, to tell me if they believe that two percent is under, and it's ridiculous, and we really need to be going someplace else. Or do I move forward ahead in the next couple of weeks, and this is what the consensus of the room is? And if that, then I'll let you guys say your, your piece on it.
Again, I think alls we have to do is take the three, um, instructions that you've given us, George, and, um, reviewing everything, two percent is where we should be, um, as you said. And people have to understand when a budget is done, and when the Finance Committee looks at it, they're not looking at Department, Department, they have to look at the entire town of East Bridgewater. And every department is different. You have small budgets and you have huge budgets. And people have to understand that the people that have been appointed to the Finance Committee, and we have some new members here, and thank, thankfully, most of them have been here through this process. If not, any questions? Again, they can come back and talk, you know, with George about. People have to look at the town and not specify, "Well, this department needs this." Doesn't matter what the rest of the departments need. This department, uh, they don't do anything anyhow, we're not gonna give them any. It doesn't work that way. We are a town made up of many different departments, we get many different requests, the impact statements are very, very important. That could be people's jobs that we're talking about here. And this is what the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectment look at at the end. So when you're out there, when you're talking about it, again, questions you have about the budget, okay, the Finance Committee, they will be televised, all the meetings that we have, you can, and they're open to the public. This year, and that's the first time this has happened, there's no excuse for people not being, okay, in the know if they want to be. And I've said this before during these instructions, please don't ask your neighbor. Please do not go on social media to get your answers. The answers are sitting in this room over here with George and the Finance Committee on why they're doing what they're doing. And it's up to you to take the responsibility. Don't go out there and trash and sit there and say, "Yeah, they screwed it up again." Get your answers. This is what it's all about. Get the correct answers from the people that are doing the work. Thank you.
Here's one last thing that I'll throw out, which was a coincidental thing, and this is Erica one more time. Um, you pass these out, Rebecca. But we had our, our meeting last week, and, and by the way, I'm not expecting anybody to stop reading through this, it's, it's like a number of pages long. But we had that, our first meeting, two weeks ago, three weeks ago. And we were talking about the misuse of free cash and the use of stabilization monies, and why it's a bad thing, and how it ran us into a hole in the past. Coincidentally, only this week, if you look at it, Tony Rassus, the Deputy Director of the Department of, of Revenue, Division of Local Services, put out an entire article on things that he's saying, town stress, and if they have what they call a dashboard. And what essentially he's saying is, he's, they're, they're beginning to see a trend of people beginning to use free cash to start funding budgets, rather than one-time capital expenditures. And Erica was good enough to go through and actually use the dashboard and show, you know, like, that, that even our free cash is on the decline, okay? It kind of mimics what we had already put out the week before, but it's, it's just another perspective on where we are. Having said all that, I mean, I, you know, it gets very quiet when we do this, and it sounds ominous. And, uh, and the point that I, I guess we're trying to put out is, the town of East Bridgewater is not in a horrific or bad situation. We're holding our own, we've got our head above water, and we're treading water like everybody else. In fact, we're probably maybe a little more secure than a few of the other towns around us. The problem that we have is when you come down to, we are held by Proposition Two and a Half. There is a, there is a legitimate way to go by. If, if the town is upset, saying one point, one million and thirty-eight thousand just doesn't cut it, you can get an override. Am I telling folks, "Go for an override"? I don't live here, I have never gone out and campaigned for anything. It's, it would be unethical for me as a non-taxpayer to be saying, "Go for an override." If you want it, it's there, and you have the legitimate availability. You can go as high as you want. You can go for an override of two million and target it for wherever it is. But in the absence, in the absence of an override, we are compelled, as this whole group, Finance Your People, Finance Committee, Boards of Selectment, all the department heads, to produce a budget that falls within the Proposition Two and a Half guidelines, which is right now what the will of the people is, and not to produce something that we know is going to go down the drain within a year or two and leave the town in that state that it was in, which I showed you la- a couple of weeks ago, bankruptcy. That's what we're gonna move forward with. And hopefully, with the help of the town, we'll stay within those boundaries. That's about it.
Carol?
I don't have anything to add, George. I mean, you, you know, the numbers don't lie. They are what they are.
Yeah. Bill? We take a lot of good information, and it really just comes down to what that, those numbers are gonna be, and, you know, any sort of give and take between other departments.
Right.
And, you know, like Dave said, I mean, it's not just one department. I mean, there are certain people that use the ambulance service on a regular basis, probably abusing it, and you got other people that don't use it at all, so, but we, we need a little bit of everything, you know?
When you, when you started, Bill, one of the things you guys asked, too, I'll just reiterate it, Rebecca, Erica and Rebecca are killing me, uh, because they're, you know, the, the name is too close and I can't, but we have been posting these up to the website, under Finance Committee, isn't it? Finance Committee, that, that's there. Oh, and by the way, I'll give you guys one last thing. Erica.
You said that four times now.
He's like Jeff Hutton, you see, he'll need this.
No, no, it's, it's, it's the other guy there with the raincoat there. Just one more thing, or whatever. Uh, wait, wait a minute, I just had a, no, I mean, Erica, just for your own thing, is, is going to be leaving us. Um, and, um, and she is the third rung of my, uh, of, of, of a financial, um, team that I've been very, very proud of. And, um, I'm glad for her, because she's got a very good opportunity coming up. Uh, she's gonna be missed by myself, and I believe that, that our, our other financial, uh, folks. And I just wanted to, to, to let you know that before she goes out the door.
Yes, we will miss you, Erica.
What was that?
Give an applause when you leave.
It's a great service you've done to the town. With that, any questions out there? Good, thank you.
Would you like a motion to adjourn? I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for your attention.
George.
Any questions? George, you want me to give out your cellphone?
Well, I mean, I mean, we've had it, we've had an unprecedented amount of calls down to zero so far, so I mean, I guess it's gone over like a lead balloon, but, uh, we'll go from there, you know? I know this is like watching, uh, paint dry, but, you know, it is what it is.
Not for some of us.
Well, Bill's real familiar with.